Good evening, all. Call to order, the Arvada City Council meeting for June 17th, 2019, and call upon Mayor Pro Tem, John Marriott.
If you'd please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Present.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember McGough?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
I'm here again.
Okay, all present and accounted for. Next, we'll have the minutes of June 3rd. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. Next, public comment on issues not scheduled. I've got several folks who are signed up. I'll start with Rachel Smallwood.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the time tonight. I'm here to talk about the organized waste hauling. And as a representative of Arvadans for Progressive Action, we've been going out into the neighborhoods, knocking on doors, talking to people about what you all are exploring, and why, and to see how they feel about it. So I just wanted to give you a little report on what our observations have been, and then also, just a little shout-out to anybody who's watching. Canvassing is fun, everybody should do it. The weather's been great, people have been really nice, had some really great conversations, got to know my neighbors better. But anyway, we knocked on about 400 doors, had over 120 conversations with people, and from the people that I talked to, about 36% of them were in support of it, 6% leaned in favor, 12% said they were in favor "if." If the cost went down was the main one, or if we got the services that we wanted, like recycling, or bulky item pickup, or yard debris pickup. There was a couple people who said if it would depend on which company was chosen, and how the city chose that company. So they didn't say how they wanted you to do it, but I assumed it should just be really transparent. And then, one person said he would support it as long as he was allowed to opt out, and he felt like that was enough to give him choice. And that was his number-one concern, was choice. So then, let's see, 13% were neutral, 3% leaned opposed, and 12% were opposed, and 9% were unsure. So ultimately, that was about 54% to some degree of support, and 15% to some degree of opposed. And it was just kind of me running a bunch of numbers, but that's what I have for you today. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Roger.
I didn't tell you my address, do you need it?
No, you've got, anytime you've found a card, we've got your address, so I don't need to ask you for that.
Okay.
Tara Kent.
Good evening, council. Tara Kent, District 3. I am in support of an organized hauling system, as you may already know. And my main reason for talking tonight is, I really want to push you guys to make a decision, instead of putting this as an advisory question on the ballot, because we all know that in the 2017 citizen's survey, 67% of Arvadans said they are in support of organized hauling or a single hauler, and more recycling. So I think that that's really all we need right now, that we can go forward with the choice once we get the RFP back in 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris Horowitz.
Hello, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'm also here to speak in support of the organized waste hauling system. As Tara noted, in 2017, we surveyed Arvada residents, and two-thirds of those surveyed said they were in support of a single hauler trash and recycling system. We all, we, the community, have elected you all to make smart decisions, and we let you know, as a community, that we care about recycling. There are a myriad of benefits to adopting a waste hauling system. The ones that appealed most to residents were the reduction of cost for curbside collection, fewer trucks on the road, which would result in less pollution, in air noise pollution, less road damage, and also increased safety, in general, in the neighborhood. The RFPs are out right now, and the next steps are to get them back, review them, and finalize the details of the contract. Why use more time and resources to survey folks yet again? We know what they want, and I feel as though a question on the ballot would actually serve to confuse voters, who may think that their decision on the matter would be binding in some way. So, we know what the people want, so let's please move forward with this contract, and not put a question on the ballot. Also, I forgot to mention, I was recently appointed to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Thanks.
Thank you. Mindy Moore.
Good evening. This must be snazzy Thai night. I like them all, they're great. I appreciate being able to make public comment. I'm also a new member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and a member of Arvadans for Progressive Action, so I wanted to follow up my own perspective of the canvassing. I went out two different weekends, to two different Arvada neighborhoods, where they don't already have organized trash hauling and recycling, so they're not HOA neighborhoods. And the bulk of the people I spoke with, you know, more than 50%, were supportive. Once they heard what the city was doing, the thoughtful process you're going through, with the requests for proposals, and then the looking at what you get back, and making a decision whether to go ahead or not, they were excited about the possibility of lower costs, increased recycling options, fewer trucks on the road, and everything that you've already heard tonight. I wanted to give you one story of a gentleman I spoke to in Britton Park. Once we started talking about the possibility for more curbside recycling, he said, "I work for a can manufacturer, a local can manufacturer. We need more raw materials. We need people to recycle more." And curbside recycling, when people are educated about what to put in the cans, is the best way to get those raw materials. So this is an example of job protection for one of your residents, who works at a facility that needs raw materials from recycling. These are probably not the people that are calling or emailing you, but the people I spoke with were in favor, and we just wanted to give you that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Rodriguez, you're next.
Hi, my name is Joshua Rodriguez. I'm a candidate for Arvada mayor. A little bit about me, I'm a scientist, I work in research and development, been married for 11 years, have three kids, started a nonprofit here called One Arvada. And I was here, the other business meeting, talking about my nonprofit, and how I needed some help with the fees. And what I got was, I have to pay the fees. I feel it's a little bureaucracy involved, and that's just how it works. But when you get the question, maybe in a debate, you know, "How are we going to solve homelessness?" And you say, "Well, it's a community issue," right? And then you have a community member coming up to you, saying, "Well, here's what I want to do for the community," right? You said it's a community issue, "I'm here for some relief," and then you turn around and they give me more, give people bureaucracy, right? And when we think about issues, teen issues, teen suicide, the Highland Ranch shooting, vaping, bullying, any of that stuff, and you classify it as a community issue, but then when someone comes up to you for help, you give them bureaucracy. And one of the reasons why I'm running for mayor is because of the Parkland shooting, right? You heard constantly, politicians don't do enough. What's going on? You know, we're all sitting here waiting forever for something to happen, and it's never happening, right? That was an example of what's slowing down progress. Is it politics? Is it bureaucracy? I don't, that was an example of it. And so, I'm just talking about it because I'm just disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Randy Mormon.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Randy Mormon, I'm on the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, and I first want to thank you for all the work that you have been doing on waste. I know it's been a good several months that we've been talking about it and working on it, and also thank the staff for their hard work on that as well. And I'm excited to see what comes back in proposals, from the request for proposal. I did want to follow up with some comments that some other folks had mentioned about concern around putting it on the ballot as an advisory question. I think my concerns centers primarily around the confusion that voters may have about that, because it is non-binding, and when we go to fill out the ballot, we think we're voting for something that's going to be binding. And I think the other part of the confusion is that it would be making a choice on the ballot about something that affects only, directly impacts part of the population. So the folks that live in non-HOA areas are not in multifamily units, but however, everyone will be getting that question, and again, seeing that as a ballot question. I do want to point out, though, I think that if we were really interested in getting public input, and getting education out in the community about this issue, and getting folks involved, and getting constructive feedback, I think there's a robust public involvement process that we can implement, once we get the proposals back, and engage the community in that. And I think they'll be a lot more fruitful than putting a question on the ballot, and going through that type of engagement process, that will, I think, be really helpful, as you, as a council, make this important decision. So, again, I would suggest you considering moving forward, once we get the proposals back, and involving the community in a more robust process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure when we get to the public hearings on this, it'll be very robust. Eric Callerman, Call Mar, sorry.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Eric, and I have a property at 59th Avenue, on Arvada, 4004, what is it, 400, wait, 8004, right, 3-0. Okay. Anyway, I came here because I expected to be called or communicated about the so-called organized trash collection hauling, and I did not get any note on it. I went to the computer, I could not get even a comment on the computer, because there was some obstacle on it. I called the city and see how I could do it, still could not do it. Anyway, that was a May 16 meeting I missed, so that's why I came today. Now, I have some questions on this whole thing. First of all, is that centralization, like nationalizing, like a healthcare, and could individuals do better than some centralized power? I think the individuals are the best organizers about their pocket, and that's important. And could people forced into it, is there any chance to get out of it? And if there's a chance out of it, those people want to have accepted, exception, have exception, they have to indicate that, or they just don't have to do anything, but those who want it, they should notice you. The other one is about the cost. I have a simple met, if I have like a healthcare, I am here, my doctor is there, between us, there are three, four people, and there is a health manager, health coordinator, special referral, three people. Don't tell me, it will be cheaper. Now, same thing, city, I mean, sorry, trash hauler, individuals, and there is a city between, it will be costing more, not whatever you see as a simple met. If I have to pay a third party, it is more expensive. And so I have a really question, if you want to go this way, or some other way. Perhaps people should vote for it. I don't trust in making a survey. Many times, those surveys could be twisted, and not trustable for me. I saw a lot of examples of this. Well, I hope you will think of it, and do something good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Does any other member of the public like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and we'll start with some new business. We have four items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing an amendment to a participating addendum by and between the City of Arvada and ABBA Technologies, an authorized reseller for Hewitt Packard Enterprises, for the purchase of computer equipment and storage, in an amount not to exceed approximately $974,000, for additional equipment, and released licenses and services in an amount not to exceed $195,000 in the first year. Second item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Diamond Contracting Corporation for the 2019 water main replacement project, in an amount not to exceed approximately $1,550,000. Third one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and JustBU, Star Playgrounds for Playground Equipment Replacement at Rainbow East Park, in an amount not to exceed approximately $266,000. Fourth item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Arvada and A-Z Recreation for Playground Equipment Replacement at Ralston Valley Park, in an amount not to exceed approximately $353,000. Ms. Pfeiffer.
I move to approve the consent agenda, as stated.
Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. Next, we have a resolution, resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County School District R1, for the use of Great Outdoors Colorado School Playyard Initiative Funds, to benefit North Arvada Middle School. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This agreement, we've been asked to partner with the Jefferson County School District and North Arvada Middle School for a local, as the local government sponsor of a school play yard grant from Great Outdoors Colorado. We've done this before, and have had successful partnerships at some elementary schools throughout the community, community gardens, and things along those lines. What this will do is allow for the, for us to develop a obstacle course play structure, to help form a critical part of the outdoor learning community space that North Arvada Middle School is trying to create. The obstacle course park will be styled after the American Ninja Warrior show. So, probably not something that Mr. Dale and I could actually do, but others, I'm sure, can. So, this will be for ages 10-year-olds up to adults. One year ago, the North Arvada school students, parents, and community members came together to contribute towards this plan. Part of the reason why we're asked to partner is that the Colorado Constitution establishes that only eligible entities may receive these GOCO grants, and those are local governments. This is a great partnership, we've done it before, as I said, with other schools, and we are certainly recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, council question or action? We've got a little arm wrestling going on. Actually, pointing.
Mr. Outdoors, you should do it, go for it.
Okay, thank you. I move the Resolution R19-060, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County School District R1, for the use of Great Outdoors Colorado School Playyard Initiative Funds, to benefit North Arvada Middle School, be approved. I want to make one short comment, and that's that anytime I have a resolution in front of me that says ninja and warrior in it, I'm voting yes.
Might be some, might be some creative motions coming forward. Yeah, Mr. Pfeiffer, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. I didn't realize we had litmus tests for our motions, but now we have a new one. Okay, next, we have ordinances, I'm first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the Council Bill 19-026, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue, for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements, as part of the traffic signal rebuild, Hill Petroleum Project #18-TC-01, and Council Bill 19-027, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Place, for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements, as part of the Ralston Road and West 58th Place Traffic Signal Rebuild Phase II, Project Both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearings set for July 15th, 2019, at 6:15 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. Next, we'll move into public hearings. I'm going to open the council, or the public hearing on Council Bill 19022, an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the 2019 Operating in Capital Budget, in the amount of $1,440,000, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the State Highway 72, Ward Road, and West 58th Avenue Intersection Improvements, Project #15ST-22, CDOT Project #22276. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This will improve the Ward Road, West 58th Avenue intersection, in partnership with the Colorado Department of Transportation. The funding from this project primarily comes from federal and state agencies, with additional funding coming from the city's one-time allocation of the highway users' tax fund distribution from the state. And additionally, we have some contribution coming from the timberline development, as part of the traffic impact fees. The purpose of this agreement is to establish the scope of the project, and the amount of federal participation administered by CDOT, and outline the responsibilities for CDOT and the City of Arvada to complete the design and construction of the project. I think all of you know about this intersection, I know Councilmember Pfeiffer knows about this intersection, and it is a high-volume intersection, commuter route, and with this, to address these safety concerns, the following improvements will be part of the project, new traffic signals and all other equipment for traffic operations, the removal and replacement of Four Corner Islands and median on West 58th Avenue, the addition of a second westbound left-turn lane, the addition of a southbound acceleration lane on Ward Road, a new sidewalk, utility relocation is necessary, and right-of-way acquisition. And we are definitely recommending approval of the ordinance as presented.
Hey, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for City Council questions or action. Ms. Pfeiffer?
If there's any questions, I'll make the motion, and then the comment.
Proceed.
I move that Council Bill 19022, an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the 2019 Operating in Capital Budget, in the amount of $1.44 million, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the State Highway 72, Ward Road, and West 58th Avenue Intersection Improvements, Project #15ST22, CDOT Project 22276, and approved on final reading, Number 4693, and ordered published by title only. My comment on this is, I hope it improves, because it always seems that Ward backs up at this intersection, when you go all the way back to the highway. So hopefully, this is something that will improve the entire corridor, because something's off at this intersection, so I'm glad to see this in front of us today.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19023, an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment to the 2019 Operating in Capital Budget, in the amount of $525,000, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the signal replacement at 58th Avenue and Independence Street, and 86th Parkway and Kipling Street, Project #18TC03, CDOT Project #22275. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This project will facilitate two intersection improvements, as you mentioned, one at West 58th, and Independence, and the other one at West A6th Parkway and Kipling Street. The intersections currently have antiquated signal equipment that does not meet current standards, the increased traffic volumes have resulted in safety concerns associated with poor operational characteristics, and to address these safety concerns, new signal equipment, including poles, mast arms, and signal cabinets, will be installed. Right-of-way acquisition will also be required at the 58th Avenue and Independence location. The city has been awarded a $525,000 grant from CDOT, design work is complete on the two intersections, and once the projects have been bid, if there are any additional costs will be required, the city will be required to make the payments. Additional funding, if needed, is available in the CIP replacement account, and once again, we are recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Any member of the public like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, open up for City Council question or actions. Mr. Marriott, you're first.
Thank you. I move the Council Bill 19-023, an ordinance authorizing the Second Agreement to the 2019 Operating in Capital Budget, in the amount of $525,000, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada pertaining to the signal replacements at 58th Avenue and Independence Street, and 86th Parkway and Kipling Street, Project #18-TC-03, CDOT Project #22275, be approved on final reading, Number 4694, and ordered published by title only.
Ms. Ford, did you have a question, or were you just, Mr. Marriott just beat you to the trigger? Okay, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19024, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Hidden Acres, filing Number 1, from City of Arvada RM Residential Multifamily to PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 11.1 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 8530 West 52nd Avenue. Same time, we will be considering Hidden Acres filing Number 1 Preliminary Development Plan, at 8530 West 52nd Avenue, and Hidden Acres filing 1 Preliminary Platte, at 8530 West 52nd Avenue. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we start this hearing, I just need to make a disclosure. I own two parcels of property on the north side of 52nd Avenue from this development, and my parcels are not contiguous to this development, nor does anything about this development stand to benefit me, one way or another, so I will not be recusing myself, but I do want to disclose that I do own property that is virtually across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Planning Manager Rob Sumitana will introduce these items.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The applicant is requesting a rezoning, as you mentioned, from RM to PUDR, Preliminary Development Plan and Preliminary Platte Approval for a 16-unit townhome project. The site is located south of 52nd Avenue, a couple of parcels west of Carr Street, and it's approximately 1.85 acres in size, and there are currently six residential units on the site that will remain as part of this project. The applicant has requested modifications to the PUD standards for reduced setbacks, reduced lot size and width, and increased lot coverage to accommodate this type of development. Staff does support these modifications for the reasons described in the staff report. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, PDP, and preliminary platte, based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the project at their May 21st meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. A representative for the applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions, and we also have Planner Jeremiah Bevo here for questions as well.
Posting log and mailing affidavit, we made part of the record. Anyone that wishes to testify in this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, you may proceed with your presentation. Okay, you may proceed with your presentation.
Appreciate the opportunity to present our project this evening. As Rob mentioned, the project is located-
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Oh, excuse me.
No problem.
Brad Eichman, M.A. Architects, 2329 West Main Street, Littleton, Colorado. As Rob pointed out, the project is located just southwest of the Old Town area. The larger site is in the image below that. It's located between Carr and Dover Street, just south of 52nd Avenue. This is in an area of Arvada that has rural style, excuse me, rural-style properties and semi-rural-style properties, as well as newer subdivisions. The architecture will be traditional. We would call this traditional cottage-style architecture. And many of these have, or all of them have covered front porch areas, traditional detailing. It's going to fit in well with the surrounding neighborhood. It's going to respect the context of the area in which it's built. There'll be a strong visual connection to the surrounding neighborhoods. There are existing residences on the site right now. And those are located just to the right, the upper right on the site plan as you're viewing it here. North is straight up, 52nd Avenue running left to right. And those photos you just viewed are of the existing residences as you come into the project. As you come in a little bit further to the project, down the main center drive aisle, you will see this image, the existing residences on the left. You'll see the townhomes beyond. Building type, we have three different building types. Two of them are very similar. The one on the left is a fourplex. The one on the right is a threeplex. And as you look again to the western portion of the site, there are four buildings, four threeplex buildings, surrounding a central pocket park, community open space area. And that can be, that's the image as you're seeing it here, looking to the west. The project meets with the several portions of the comprehensive plan. It's going to provide for a balanced mix of residential-type product in the area. It's going to create a variety of housing in the area. It's going to satisfy the needs and the demands of the area as well for housing. This will be a for-sale product, and we are looking forward to getting this approved and getting it built this fall. Any questions?
Well, see, first of all, is there any else, anyone else in the audience that would like to testify regarding this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer, you're first.
I do have a few questions. So maybe staff or somebody can help me understand, from a fire district perspective, this only has one entrance off of 52nd, which is becoming a very busy road. So doesn't development like this need two entrances?
We have been in coordination with the fire department, as well as, you know, we've reviewed a turning analysis with them as well, and they did not require a second entrance, and they have approved the PDP from their end as such.
I don't recall that they make the decision if we have a second or not, because I remember my community that the city required a second entrance based on the size. Does this not require a second entrance? And why?
I don't know that I can speak to why. I do know that I believe it's somewhere around 30 units requires a second, sometimes requires a second entrance, or they're more attuned to that. But a project of this size, we've had several instances where just one access is provided as long as they provide the appropriate turnaround for the fire truck.
Okay. And then the question around your center park is also the storm detention and drainage easement. So are you going to be storing water in the middle of that little pocket park?
Yes, yes. This central area running east-west, as well as the area north-south, the green area just to the west, the central drive area, will have a storm system.
That pocket, that pocket.
Correct.
So, okay, so it's not really a park, it's a detention pond?
Well, just to, I can clarify that. So it's an underground detention system.
Oh, it's underground?
Yep, so above, it'll be flat, and there is an underground detention system, as well as underneath the parking, the guest parking spaces to the north. There's an additional underground detention system there.
Okay.
We used to call those water holes, and they were fun in our youth, but we can't do those anymore.
Only if you knew. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I wonder if you'd back up a slide or two to show the overall plan. There, in the area that is shown as gray there, is that all pavement?
That is pavement, yes.
All of that is pavement?
Yes.
And the lighter gray is the garages?
Correct.
So, okay. So our width of our entry, the street, is, meets the standards, of course, and then we have the parking along the east side of that entry road.
Correct.
Okay.
And as well as the, as well as the north.
Yes, I see that. Okay, just want to make sure I understood what all that represented. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. McGough?
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 19-024, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Hidden Acres, filing One, from City of Arvada RM Residential Multifamily to PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 11.1 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, 8530 West 52nd Avenue, be approved on final reading Number 4695, and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Ms. Miller, you wish to speak to the motion?
I do. I just wanted to say that I would be supporting the motion, because I love the, I love the design. I think it's fantastic. It fits with the neighborhood. And I loved the comments from the neighborhood, that one neighbor would like to purchase one when they're complete, and the other one loved the, loved the design. And we just wish that all neighborhood meetings would go like that.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion for a couple of reasons. First of all, one of our goals as a city council is to have a variety of housing stock, and this certainly fits a need. And certainly, the fact that this is a for-sale product. Again, we've been striving for a long time to get more entry-level for-sale product, sort of as a gateway to homeownership, and I think that's pretty positive. So if I could have Mr. McGough, Ms. Ford, and Mr. Pfeiffer cast your votes. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Mr. McGough?
I move that Hidden Acres filing One Preliminary Development Plan, 8530 West 52nd Avenue, be approved subject to the, be approved subject to the updated condition of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
All votes are cast. That likewise passes seven to zero. Mr. McGough, one more.
I move that Hidden Acres filing One Preliminary Platte, 8530 West 52nd Avenue, be approved subject to the attached updated condition of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motions for approval? Okay, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. You know, I can tell you, I for one, and I've heard it from others, have been really impressed with what the property owner has done there with the White Houses, really brought them up into a nice condition. And frankly, seeing what he did with those makes me feel very confident about what's going to happen with the rest of the project. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. One last public hearing. Council Bill 19025, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada, Jefferson County School District R1, and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the use of Arvada's fiber optic network for current and future broadband communications for public entity operations. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I am sure the council knows, we are building out a fiber optic network. We call it the Arvada Fiber Optic Network, or AFON for short. It's a key part of our strategic goal to improve broadband for city operations, and it's a high-speed data network that is intended to connect various city facilities. Along the way, we came up with the idea that we should reach out to Jefferson County School District and to the Arvada Fire Protection District and find out if they would like us to work with them on connecting their, their facilities throughout the community as a way of improving the fiber optic network and making it available for emergency communications, emergency services and response, enhanced digital education, increased bandwidth requirements, and so forth. And both the school district and the fire protection district indicated that they were interested in such a proposition. So through the work of our Information Technology and Management Department, along with the city attorney's office, and through the work of those agencies, we've developed this intergovernmental agreement that is before you today. It will, or tonight, it will help with, with providing high-speed internet throughout our community, and it will not only help our city facilities, but it will help other facilities throughout the community, including fire stations and school facilities and so forth. And we are certainly recommending approval of this, of this ordinance. We've seen some extremely, some great benefits so far in terms of our Whisper Creek Community Station, the Westwood Golf Club, and other facilities in our area being able to, to take advantage of this network. And then, of course, Jefferson County Schools, Three Creeks K8 School, and other facilities associated with the district have also been able to take advantage of that. So we certainly recommend the council approve this ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for questions or actions. Ms. Ford, you're first.
I'd like to make motion if there are no questions.
Let's see if there's any other questions. You've reserved the motion. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I do have a question or a comment first. I believe that the, we received some communication recently that the fire district, the Arvada Fire Protection District, has received recognition from the Colorado Special Districts Association for their participation and involvement in this project. So it's been recognized not only by the fire department, who's one of our partners here, but by the Special Districts Association. Have I said that correctly?
Absolutely. It was the Special Districts Association that recognized the fire protection district.
So it's, it's recognized as something valuable, not only to our city, but to the, to the fire district, and recognized by the state association of special districts.
Mr. Jones?
I'll reserve my thoughts or my comments for the, speak to the motion.
Okay, very good. Ms. Ford, you may make your motion.
I move that CB19-025, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada, Jefferson County School District R-1, and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the use of Arvada's fiber optic network for current and future broadband communications for public entity operations, be approved on final reading Number 4696, and ordered published by title only.
Motions for approval. Mr. Jones, you're first in terms of speaking to the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the city staff, especially our infamous and famous IT department for the work that they're doing with regards to AFON. Haven't heard that before. I like that. Ms. Miller and I have the opportunity to serve on the Jefferson County School District's R1 Coordinating Committee and the Arvada Fire Protection District Coordinating Committee. And this is just another example of working together broadly with, with our community and other, and other important groups in our city. So again, I just really wanted to thank city for reaching out and making this coordinated effort happen.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Thank you. I have a few of the same comments as well, but I have some inside baseball on this, because I do have a day job that talks about municipal broadband and rural broadband. And I just want to, I followed this very closely in my day job, and I've been helping Jefferson County schools with their fiber RFP and some other things they're trying to do. So, but this effort, not only does it talk about partnerships with our public entities, which is, I think, really critical for the health of our community, the resiliency of our community, the attractiveness to our community, but it also, I think it really reflects on how Arvada works with its partners in the region. One of the things that I will highlight for the staff, Ron and Rick and everyone, that from Jefferson County Schools' perspective, when I've talked to them, is saying, Arvada bar none is the best, and, and one, being innovative, forward-focused, and very partner-oriented. When a partner tells you this in another job capacity, it gives me goosebumps to know that, that we're reflected very positive. And I'm looking at Ron over your head, yeah, duck, because that, that, it's great to know that that happens. Stuff that's under the ground subsurface is not sexy. No one knows it's there. Internet is, is, is kind of like, people look at it as like water, and if it's not on, everyone freaks out. So, you know, it's one of those things that it's, it's, it's technology that's transparent, but it's important. And because of, because of those partnerships, and because of the resiliency and the betterment of our community, I, I just want to thank staff. I want to thank everything you do day in and day out to make that positive reflection and, and making our community better. And especially in some of the areas we're talking about, which is in District Four, that has broadband issues, you know, those are being resolved, but with some of the carriers out there, that, that we're just thinking of everyone and everything. So I can keep going on and on and on and on, but I love this topic, as you all know, and I'm proud of, of the staff on this one. So thank you.
All votes are cast. Passes seven to zero. Thank you. That concludes our public hearings. I'll open it back up for public comment if any member of the public would like to address this again. Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Just wanted to tell the community that June 18th, Broome Field City Council is doing a study session, and they're going to be talking about the Jefferson Parkway. What's unique about it is you'll, you'll hear from scientists, representatives from community groups, but you'll also hear from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and also the Rocky Flats Technical Group. So I think it'll be good information. And that will be June 18th, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, any city council reports? Mr. McGough?
I'm sorry, I don't have the specific information, but I think we ought to take note that the replica Vietnam War Memorial will be on display this weekend at Faith Bible Chapel near 64th, just west of, west and southwest of that intersection, 64th and Ward. And I'm not sure which day it opens. Is it Thursday? Thursday through Sunday. And so I'm hoping that each of us will be able to visit that site and encourage our citizens to attend also and view that, that replica wall dedicated to the Vietnam War.
And our own Dot Miller will be giving the comments at the beginning of that on Thursday at 6 o'clock PM.
I'll be there to give you more support.
Ms. Miller, do you have a couple of motions you wish to make?
I do, Your Honor. Appreciate you. I move to cancel the July 1st, 2019 city council meeting.
Motions to cancel July 1st meeting. That passes seven to zero. Next motion?
I move to cancel the workshop scheduled on July 8th, 2019. However, council will meet for the sole purpose of holding an executive session for instructions to negotiators. to negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 per N4 per NE relating to the city, or Arvada Center.
So we will still be here on July 8th, but only for purposes of a executive session. We will be taking no action at the conclusion of that. Mr. Jones, if you'll cast your vote. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Mr. Devon, anything for us tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. We did not really have a update available for a couple of items that were scheduled for July 8th. We'll move those to July the 22nd. And then the, the other thing I wanted to mention to council, if you'll indulge me for a second, there is a proclamation that I would like to suggest. It's a sign and send-type proclamation for the Women's Federation for World Peace. There's some additional information that I was able to find out about that request, and I would urge the city council to consider signing it, and we will send it to the persons that requested it.
And we get a lot of requests for proclamations, and typically on these sign and send, we'll do them. This one actually had a tie with the resident from the City of Arvada who's involved in it, which is why she asked that we consider doing that. Is everybody okay with?
Yes.
Doing that? Just as a sign and send?
Sure.
Fair enough. So if, everybody just go down and sign it before you leave tonight. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Devon? Mr. Daley, anything you have for us? You sure? Positive?
I can.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.